10 o'clock, October 20th, 2014. Call listing to order. I have G B Roque.
Murphy?
Here.
The action?
Present.
Strong, here. Item 3, group of board clients.
I will make the motion to pay the bills.
Second?
Second, yes.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I gotta read the minutes.
Item 4, group of minutes last meeting, October 6th, 2014.
I'll make the motion through. We're gonna tear it to our fill.
Shelley.
I could do it, and I should've a long time ago.
You'd have done a long time ago.
You'd have done a long time ago.
What the hell? Kinda upset me a little bit.
I'll say, all favor?
Aye.
Measure room.
Skip to the other stuff, go back to your permit.
Do what?
You wanna skip to some of these and then do the permits.
Yeah, we can. We do those permits last.
So you got seven on that?
Yeah, starting at seven.
Item 7, discussion possible actions regarding N W O S U use of courthouse lawn for rodeo on the square. What do you got, Stumpf?
Uh, we just would like to use the square on, uh, it's October 29th on that Wednesday.
Yep, October 29th.
That way we don't interfere with Halloween in our curve from, I think it's about 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM for the kids, uh, the hours schools to, you know, do our rodeo on the square. That would be great.
I'll make the motion, second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks for coming in.
Yep, thank you.
Good to go.
You guys have a good one.
See.
Should've put them together. How about go down to the level?
Same button.
Yeah.
Which one's true?
She's numbered, right?
Is that what you say?
We'll let's do Gilly get that.
I'm asking for commission, permission over the Christmas light committee. We'd like to start putting Christmas lights up around the square beginning November 1st and take them down by January 2nd.
I'll make the motion, second.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Ron, are you here for one of us, or?
No, I just came by. I got a permit in there in case anybody had any questions on it.
Okay. We'll get to those here in just a minute. Looks like I'm trying to get some.
Don't worry, don't worry.
Hell, grab a chair, man.
I figured we had a thing over there.
Um, yeah, number, um...
13. Item 12, discussion possible action regarding use of courthouse lawn for spook backup.
Do Phil want third?
Come on in.
Alex. And I'm actually...
Sorry?
That's fine. I'm requesting for the Spooktacular on the 31st, uh, from about 3:15 to 4 o'clock for the spook parade and the Spooktacular. And then also on December 7th for Candy Cane Cash Giveaway and the parade.
I didn't have the Spooktacular paper.
You don't? On those? Okay.
I got the other two, but I'll have, let me run upstairs and grab it.
Okay.
I made motion, motion.
We tuned in all three, so.
All three? They're all three? Whatever. Yeah, I think he's on three. Oh, okay.
You're gonna get your way, you know that.
Okay.
All favor?
Aye. That takes care of the spooks. Still have to get them all.
Yeah, we have another one for December the 7th. Candy Cane Cage at 4:30.
Make the motion, second.
And the Christmas Parade, December the 7th at 5:30.
I'll do the same. I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're good, Alex. Thanks for coming over.
Thank you.
Hope you have a good turnout with the weather.
I'm okay, thanks.
And then you have to go through city council and we gotta go through...
So does that take it through down to the Waco Industries then?
No, it doesn't go. It goes about halfway through that mile.
I have no clue where that was at.
Yeah.
Still pretty good size.
Yeah, 10 acres, 10 plus.
We're gonna have to care of those and I'll...
Thank you, appreciate it.
Here's all your papers.
Do we need to sign that out, did you?
She's, she's filling it out.
Okay, so here's the three that came up here, but I know we're waiting on her.
Item 7, three, this three monthly divorce and shares office.
Make the motion, second.
All favor?
This is under 10:30 on that launch, but...
Gordon, right?
Thank you so much.
Just remove.
You're gonna go hungry, you'll be down for this.
Just need to sign it, Alex. It's missing a whole lot. Sheriff.
Item 8, discussion possible action regarding lease agreement between Warren Cat District 2 to Banff for Freedom and branch of the Allen State Bank.
That 120, that 120 B, yeah, Shelley, I'll make the motion. It's for 2.95 years.
It's here somewhere. Here it is.
I'll say, all favor?
Aye.
May I prove it? Any signatures on that, excuse me?
Yeah, somewhere.
You don't think a lot of them assigned, some of them?
Should.
Should.
He might have extra.
He might have simplified it and simplified it too. I mean...
Do you wanna look at it? Oh, there we go.
I've not, I've not seen a copy. I, uh, Randy and I went down there and gave him, uh, one information I could do. Stand some of you again.
Usually have a sheriff.
Yes, sir, how are you? I'm doing well, Shelley. Doing well. Um, what do you call it?
Turn where else and I ran into his son.
That was the only place I saw.
I was thinking if there was an individual, but maybe I'm paying the ODOT for him, so. And I think there as well, 'cause you're acknowledging acceptance in the terms. Top line, go back to a couple more. It's like you're accepting responsibility with those two. Weed all green out here, wind, cows booting fast.
Looking good.
You guys got pretty good rain last week.
Yeah, we do.
Coming in there by that mischra which is playing, their water's standing everywhere.
Yeah, I just got them drilled about six miles south of there yesterday.
It's in that park for 10.
Item 9, discussion possible action regarding District 3 chipper, bought off state contract from Premier.
I assume you have all the paperwork with you?
I have all the paperwork. The price has been, it's what it is. I sent the emails too. Um, brand of chipper. I think it might be one of the last ones on the waste man, or, or whatever. Other guys have called and they can't come over to show us some of the last. I mean, you can get a year. I think it's been five or six permission, maybe get it.
Yeah, I did a lot of work there, I think.
We've sold a lot of them.
Did the grain didn't cover the whole chipper, did it?
No, when I paid for it, it was about capital outlay. You have all the paperwork with you?
I didn't write the books and anything, Mr. ...
Okay. Let's just do the paperwork we have to do in here right now. We'll do the rest after the meeting. The way I understand it, we're gonna pay for the whole thing and then we get reimbursed for the grain and all that, Michael.
There's a copy of the invoice. Yeah, we, this is just the warranty charges. I think we did that after.
Yes.
Actually, it's a divorce order. And I put the P O number on the top and I was told to put the top.
Sounds good.
We appreciate the diligence.
You wanna stamp this thing on front, all of this?
Will you read the whole file, please?
Thirty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-two dollars and zero pennies. And I think the grain is thirty thousand, so if they were swamped more for sixty-three fifty-two on it. We use these up for storms to get red trees and all the little towns and round bridges and stuffs. This is the best bill on paper we have to have for this and if the business end of it, that's what I thought. After we get a copy of this, take it to that office.
Okay.
My job for worse, I get 90, 94, 95.
It's actually being, I was given a few or deliver.
Yeah, I thought it might come up here, but it ended up with cracks, so we'll go show those these. Doing site, doing campaign, and we'll keep in touch soon as we get free up.
Item 10, discussion possible action regarding resolution for 2014-15 salary increases and active badge approval for the state auditor.
Yeah, and this is just formality. Um, the auditors want us to approve it, even though we approved it already before the budgets were down there. They want us to do one in this year too, just for, it's just formality for them.
Okay. And this 1, 2, 3 is?
Yeah, 1, 2, 3.
Nothing changed from what we're making last year.
Except for the years.
I'll second it.
All favor?
Aye. Do we know when this is gonna show up, or not checks yet?
November. They'll get a separate check. I mean, no, yeah, 'cause they're small, you know, 'cause we're retro.
Further, further.
Retro, I support.
October, sorry. This check, we're gonna do good.
I knew that was our target, I didn't know for no reason.
Yeah, so they'll get their regular check and then they'll get the...
Retro.
Retro check, separate, yes.
That'll be happy campers saying.
And then you retro to the start of this year?
Yes. We always have to wait on the state auditor or previous budget before we give them the money.
I think down to 15.
Discussion possible action regarding resolution for 2014-15 employees up in Mount Bay.
Yes, and this year with the calculations and the number of employees, which we have 58 that qualify, that are full-time from, um, November 1st of 2013 through October 31st of 2014. Now it looks like it'd be twelve hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
All favor?
Aye.
Lynn, we don't get that. Officers, you see, no, no.
So you're not included in the 58?
No. No.
So the, that completes the Cessar and the delegated.
Right, no.
Yeah, all, all maybe officers are out.
Are out of that.
And what she means qualifying, there's some of the new hires and things like that, they don't have the full-time criteria by the day sheet, they're not included.
As a matter of fact, we're not even one of the, we're not the 1, 2, and 3 either.
No. We're not taking any breaks.
Like Jim watered always said, you pay good money, get that job.
We'll go back to item 5, discussion possible action regarding the following road crossings. Pioneer Savior, Select, Howard Village, C and W, Kennedy Backwood Service, A E C, Chesapeake, Semgas, Rockwater.
Sure, I've got some that I have a check, but I'm not.
We'll see.
Or my bill of trade?
I think any, any seats all year.
Probably.
Hey, there are some, right here.
It'd be them or him.
All three of you got something.
Yeah, I did. I got a pretty nice one, rather start. I'm going to approve C and W and Semgas to District 3.
I'll make permission to approve mine for Rockwater, Select, A E C, and Chesapeake. All favor?
Aye.
I didn't get them all, they were all down, all mine.
I had a second, though.
I had a second.
I had my second. I'm just jealous 'cause I had one, had a check.
Is that it?
He's got yours.
There's the walls.
I guess I missed something on the left here that says on the map, it's called C map. I feel it, hey, it's on one of those, I already found it.
I'm on her mode on that one, but she was pretty excited about it all. We got this enough things on all you for your own, Tom.
Yeah, I agree. It's type 4A, he's taking a bit of concern, I guess. I usually show up at some meetings and I have been up here.
We're finally building a bridge around the one that I talked to you about, my son, and that's really my barrel that I shouldn't start on today.
No, yes, probably. I guess I'm using coffee a little, before you mentioned it. And then I guess I need a P O for the first thing. It's all a little time and sales and everything, I remember.
I don't like, my, say, was Jim in that? Yeah, that's fine. He wanted to say was good, but we'll just take that old thing right there. You have my copy?
That's your copy.
I'd ask for more permits.
Second.
All favor?
Aye. There's all the walls. Thank you. Is this map there, Ron? This full?
That, that just, yeah, that, it goes from Winoka all the way to, you resolve Winchester Tower, 29 miles, four and a half, one good. That's just a county's part, I think it's all down there, maybe it's really been on state there long since you were.
Yeah.
She was bored on the county roads, fuck you, the driveways.
So is it going all the way to, when I'm going west side of 14?
Yeah. It's for 4G with those cell towers. We're picking one up at T Garden at the corner, and there's also, we're building brand new, nine and a half floors on that 237. Back to Tyra.
Slowly papers, isn't that?
See, there's several bridges on that road. I didn't know if you guys were gonna try to replace the road anytime soon or not.
Those on 370 are... Two of them between, uh...
What we're gonna do is we're gonna try to board load the bridges so it can take 10 foot deep or so.
The dawning, I would've had the plans already done for those, adding for the right of way and everything.
Well, the right of way plan's throughout there, yeah. See, if you're 10 foot deep, you'll be in your change, as long as it's back with the wind walls, after the right of way.
Well, I told them to crowd the right of way and we'll, they'll expect that. Probably be a contractor, didn't it? We'll have to crowd the fence all.
Yeah, if they'll go out the fence line, they'll be fine.
Yeah, he may get underneath the fence line.
Two of, two of those are probably a year and a half, two years out, two more of them are another year to be out.
That's suggesting, if I like the one we just talked about, mine is getting with dawning, because my right of way ended up getting out past the fences, that's why.
That's why I wanted some of the bridges didn't look real good up through there.
But I bet yours gets out the right of way as deep as those are.
Two of those, those twin bridges are gonna come out about five feet. The one in High Cages won't, it'll stay about like it is. We've got pretty wide right of way there.
Okay. You're coming up 14 and then going east to, uh, to 370?
Yep.
On the highway and then going north, right off 64 North?
Yeah, eventually what we wanna do is, we're taking a big fiber to the, that cut across that goes to Freedom, that black out. And eventually we may go into Freedom with that.
Okay.
What that'll do is, is so we can put a redundant route out to Freedom, then with that fiber going to Moreland gets cut.
Oh.
Coming over on 64, that AT&T fiber gets cut, everything should keep working. Okay, and that's what we're looking for, 'cause these cell towers are getting kind of important anymore.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you said the new tires, where?
It's nine and a half north on that 370.
Oh, okay. How close does that go to the Winchester Bridge? Is that?
It's about, no, south of Ridge, about two and a half mile. Then I don't have friends to say the deal. No, I think we'd be on, on the bridges.
We weren't having that done by the first year, I don't know if we'll make it or not.
I don't know.
Well, every time I talk to somebody, I'm probably taken back seven or four.
Yeah, I know, so.
Back in my, my costume.
Yep.
Do a little work in the comb, I don't know if that's why you got any or not, it's all family.
No, I don't think we have any digging we need to do in town in the comb. We cleaned off stuff up years ago and we're pretty shake.
We had some streets that turned three cables long ago and all that, and we're just putting one big one.
The only one we're gonna do anything with is a block east of the school. There's a dirt road in there. We've been putting metal asphalt on it in chunks, making our rock over the top. There's no digging gonna happen.
Eventually we'll like end up neighborhood, but there's really anything going on over there, any, any more, or if there's kinda going on up there?
Still Sand Ridge and Martin Marred are at the moment. Now, Sony tells me they have a customer that's looking. I don't even know what the customer is. I'm not proving that information.
I guess we're on item sixteen, any business? Item seventeen, blue district blanket?
Make the motion second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll take it around that file right there.
There's a whole bunch of them missed on.
Item eighteen, motion to adjourn?
I'll make it.
I'll make it.
All favor?
Ten thirty, you're buying lots.
Sounds good to me, what are we having?
I'm gonna visit this.
You know, I'm pretty...
Don't wanna tell you, I'm good.
You send your usual, a lot of letters?
Yes.
Oh, great.
Is that all you need, just the road crossings, do you need a copy of that other stuff?
The sheriff's thing?
The sheriff, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I knew there was something.
Probably get you a big story off the Pioneer guy while he's sitting here.
Well, I'm telling a story.
They get bigger one off the cat guy.